Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Booker T. Washington Middle School, Eleanor Bennett and Rayhan Nelson. First Eleanor will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Rayhan, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. Eleanor, will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started?
Hello there. My name's Eleanor Bennett. I'm an eighth grader at Booker T. Washington Middle School and I love theater. I'm in the cast this year and I want to be a lawyer and go to William &amp; Mary or Amherst. And I also do dance.
Wow, great. I was just gonna ask, do you have a poem for us?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were gonna...
I got you. Those directions were a little confusing. I apologize.
I'm going to be reading Amanda Garman's "In This Place," an American lyric, well, a selection of it. It's a pretty long poem. I'm gonna be starting from, I believe it's line 66. Tyrants fear the poet. Okay. "Tyrants fear the poet. Now that we know it, we can't blow it. We owe it to show it, not slow it, although it hurts to sow it. When the world skirts below it, hope. We must bestow it like a wick in the poet, so that it can grow, lit, bringing with it stories to rewrite the story of a Texas city depleted but not defeated, a history written that need not be repeated, a nation composed but not yet completed." There's a poem in this place. "A poem in every America, in America, a poet in every American who rewrites this nation, who tells a story worth of being told in this minnow of an earth, to breathe hope into a palimpsest of time. A poet in every American who sees that our poem penned doesn't mean our poems end. There's a place where this poem dwells. It is here, it is now, in the yellow song of dawn's bell, where we write an American lyric we are just beginning to tell."
That was wonderful. And now we'll have our delivering of the pledge of allegiance. If you would come up and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello, I'm Rayhan Nelson. I'm in sixth grade for Booker T. Washington. My favorite hobbies are basketball and drama after school, and I would like to be an entrepreneur when I grow up. And I want to go to Howard University College in DC.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. This is why we're up here, students like you all. It is such a joy. Thank you for coming and spending time with us today and sharing your talents. Do you have family members or school members that you'd like to introduce? Go ahead.
This is my mom, my dad, my grandma, my mom, and my chief.
All of them. Wonderful. I had a suspicion they were all. Yes, and Eleanor, you have support too, don't you?
Yes, this is my mom.
Oh. Parents and grandparents, thank you for bringing us your best. We do appreciate it. The next item on tonight's agenda is school board recognition. So Dr. Mitchell, will you please join me at the podium?
Absolutely. Good evening. I have the honor of presenting this month's school board recognitions. Our first honorees earned a top award in this year's Virginia School Boards Association Student Video Contest, which the VSBAs host annually. This year, students across the state were invited to enter the contest and submit a 30-second video showcasing the power of kindness in three categories: Random Acts of Kindness, Kindness in Mental Health, and Kindness in Sports. Students in the telecommunications, y'all bear with me tonight. Students in the telecommunications, second-year television production class. I might need some help this evening. Recorded, edited, and submitted a video, thank you, in the Kindness in Sports category and captured first place. The winning videos were announced during VSBAs annual convention opening session last month in Williamsburg and were showcased for the audience of educational leaders. Let me get through this one. Please join us in recognizing the winners for the Kindness in Sports video. Antonio Boyd. Is he present? Donovan Crowder.
Oh, Antonio.
Ajene Hooper. Sherri Brown. Miles Monpoint. Trayvon Christian Good. Trevor Foot. Bishop Dunn. Edric Jones. Joshua Ray. And we'd also like to recognize Program Supervisor Ray Price and Instructor Carl Daniels. Telecom's video features sportscasters calling a track meet where one runner accidentally trips another coming around the track, quickly followed by the next runner sacrificing his third-place finish to stop and help his fallen opponent. The winners were selected from among 28 entries submitted from across the state. So again, we wish these young people congratulations. One more round of applause. We're gonna take a quick picture if you join us in front of the podium. And while they're making their way back to the seats, their high school principals or administrative teams are joining us tonight from Denby. I think I saw... Yes. Dr. Adrienne Struthers, I think she's out in the back. And from Heritage, Dr. Earlling Hunter. And from Woodside, Dr. Mary Hardesty and other members of the administration. Thank you for joining us. Okay, my colleague, I'm gonna present the next honoree.
Good evening. The Heritage High School Boys Volleyball Team earned the 2024 Virginia High School League Region 3A Boys Volleyball Championship. The team finished with a record, a major record. Please join us in recognizing the team. First Team All-Region, Jaden Alexander. First Team All-Region, San Antonio Garrett Hyman. Antoine Garrett Hyman. First Team All-Region, Region Player of the Year, Marcus Dozier. First Team All-Region, Isaac Ward-Payton. Isaiah Almond. DeNero Dillard. Steven Hager. Honorable Mention All-Region, Jeremiah Clums. Second Team All-Region, Tyrell Shelton. Honorable Mention All-Region, Nazir Bradshaw. Head Coach and Region Coach of the Year, Nehemiah Carter. And we'd also like the assistant coaches to come forward. Assistant Coach Olivia Smalls. Is she present? And Assistant Coach Andrea Jackson. Congratulations. Joining the team this evening are members of their family. Would you please stand as well as the Principal of Heritage High School, Dr. Earlling Hunter? Thank you. Thank you. We have a lot to celebrate this evening. The Minchville High School Golf Team captured the 2024 Virginia High School League Region 5B Golf Championship. Please join us in congratulating the following players. Thomas Amon. Paul Gier. David Ellington. Connor Manning. Ethan Sleeth. Armando Malandonado. Maldonado. And Head Coach Scott Moriarty. This year marks Minchville's golf team's third straight 5B Region Championship title and their fifth straight state appearance. So that is great. In addition, Thomas Amon won the 5B Regional Individual Title. It was his third regional title in a row. So we'd like to congratulate the team one more time, but joining the team this evening are members of their family and Minchville Principal Jason Holler. So would you please stand? Congratulations. Oh, we have another Minchville team to celebrate tonight. The Minchville High School Girls Volleyball Team earned the 2024 Virginia High School League Region 5B Girls Volleyball Championship. So please join us in congratulating First Team All-Region, Lillian Abbott. Kendall Gaskins. Emily Engel. First Team All-Region and Second Team All-State Class 5, Caroline Clements. Claire Smith. Anastasia Chappell. Ava Carter. Arcely Velasquez. Second Team All-Region, Jordan Holder. Second Team All-Region, Cameron, oh, let's go, S. Klesston. I apologize. First Team All-Region and Regional Player of the Year, Cameron Keasy. Olivia Hart. First Team All-Region, Emma Wade. Tanya Henson. And we'd like to recognize our coaches as well. Head Coach and Region Coach of the Year, Lorenzo Pentes. And Assistant Coach Nikki Wade. The Minchville Girls Volleyball Team went undefeated in the Peninsula District. So congratulations. And again, joining members of the team this evening are members of their families and Principal Jason Holler. Gee, we just learned that some of the players also play basketball, so very talented. Great, okay. Next are some clean school awards. We're very proud of our staff. Our custodians are the caretakers of our schools and offices. They ensure that our buildings and the surrounding grounds are safe and clean. Our dedicated custodians ensure that repairs and maintenance are routinely addressed, and they work tirelessly to ensure the success of athletic events, student performances, meetings, and special events. Any school, they play an even greater role, for they, along with their other dedicated support staff members, are the key elements of a successful educational environment as they contribute to the health, safety, attitude, and pride of our students. Each summer, the Custodial Services Department conducts its annual Cleanest School Campaign. School custodial teams are invited to participate in the contest to earn the Cleanest School designation. A team of supervisors from Plant Services visits each participating school and worksite and randomly evaluates several classrooms, hallways, offices, and public spaces. They survey the areas expecting them to be dust-free with shiny floors, clean carpet, pristine glass, and no apparent maintenance problems. After results are tabulated, the award winners are announced, and this evening we are recognizing the recipients of our Cleanest School Awards for 2024. At the Early Childhood Center level, the team at Watkins earned top honors. So Watkins Early Childhood Custodial Staff is as follows. Ms. Floretta Ward. Brent Carpenter. And Spencer Hicks. In the Elementary School category, the B.C. Charles Team earned the top honor. Please join us in congratulating Lead Custodian Pamela Lucas. Latoya Frank. And Jermaine McHatter. Fatter, I'm sorry. At the middle school level, the Heinz Team earned recognition. Lead Custodian Janet Hall. Douglas Jones. And Monica Rayner. The team from Warwick High School earned top honors in the high school category. Lead Custodian Darnell Mackey. Connie Johnson. Torian Chapman. Darryl West. Demetris Nelson. Ernest Bond. Antoine Lewis. Robert Hicks. Marquita Johnson. And that rounds out the Warwick Team. Among our alternative locations, the Governor's Health Sciences Academy/Gatewood Team took top honors with Lead Custodian Diane Pickett. Shaniqua Allen. And Dante Clanton. Our custodians keep their schools safe and clean, and they are an important part of the team that supports and assists our students and staff every day. Thank you for your commitment and congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. So joining these dedicated employees this evening are members of their families and friends, if you would please stand. There are principals, Ms. Amy Gulick. Orio Robinson-Taylor. Lisa Gatz-Daniel. And Tiffany Thompson at Warwick High School. Would you please stand? We would like to also acknowledge Sharon Boy, Custodial Services Supervisor, and Mr. Wade Beverly, Executive Director of Plant Services. Oh, we haven't finished yet. More recognitions to come. We have a very special recognition. One more, one more. Thank you. We have a lot to celebrate this evening. Our next recognition is a resolution of recognition in honor of School Board Member Marvin Harris, who dedicated service to the school board and our city, whose dedicated service to the school board and our city ends on December 31st. Mr. Harris, would you please come forward? The school board has a token of appreciation and a resolution for Mr. Harris. The resolution reads, Newport News School Board Resolution of Recognition Honoring Marvin L. Harris. Whereas the Newport News School Board, a duly-elected body, is charged with establishing and maintaining a system of public schools within the city of Newport News, and whereas the Newport News School Board's operational goals are to develop policies and promote student achievement and the wise management of resources, and whereas the members of the Newport News School Board hold an office of shared power and responsibility, and whereas Marvin L. Harris was elected by his constituents to serve on the Newport News School Board beginning July 1st, 2016, and was subsequently re-elected to serve another term beginning July 1st of 2020. And whereas Mr. Harris made meaningful contributions to school board discussion on topics of great significance to students, staff members, and the community, and whereas Mr. Harris served on the Facilities Planning Committee, the Career and Technical Education Advisory Board, and the New Horizons Regional Education Center Board during his tenure, contributing his expertise and leadership, and whereas Mr. Harris devoted himself to furthering the mission of ensuring that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready by championing the advancement of all students while also serving as a passionate advocate for his community. And now therefore be it resolved that Newport News School, the Newport News School Board expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Marvin L. Harris for his dedicated service to our students, families, and the citizens of Newport News, and wish him the best and continued success in his future endeavors. and wish him the best and continued success in his future endeavors. And now be it resolved, further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be spread across the minutes of this meeting for all to acknowledge. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hands this 17th day of December 2024, and it is signed by the school board and the superintendent. So thank you, Mr. Harris. We will now take a nine-minute break so that our honorees and their families may leave if they desire to do so. But during this time, our viewing audience will be able to enjoy this month's School Board Spotlight, and we ask that our student athletes remain to take additional photos. So the meeting will resume following the Spotlight segment. Thank you.
A thousand young ladies from across Newport News Public Schools came together to empower their student voice, build social and emotional well-being, and gain the skills needed to grow into global leaders. The Fifth Annual More Than a Princess Conference was a two-day weekend event hosted at Woodside High School. The event was organized by the NNP's Youth Development Team and sponsored by Bayport Credit Union. Ladies from all three division-wide student-led empowerment initiatives were invited to participate with elementary students from Blossom, the Bloom Program for Middle School, and Flourish members in high school. The event kicked off on Friday evening with an empowerment rally packed full of dancing, music, fashion, and fun. The evening celebrated and encouraged a "Boss Attitude", which stands for Bold, Original, Strong, and Special. On Saturday morning, the conference narrowed its focus to the middle and high school groups. During a morning presentation, adult mentors and student leaders discussed impactful and relevant topics, such as being aware of social media's influence on mental health and body image, and how to create positive personal branding by dressing for success and seizing positive opportunities when they arise. Before and after lunch, the ladies had a chance to visit several empowerment workshops and an activities fair presented by community partners and local leaders. Through these engaging discussions and fun activities, the middle and high school students learned important life skills, reinforced positive affirmations, gained interview skills, explored financial literacy, and learned how to build healthy relationships. More Than a Princess Conference was a positive, empowering experience for all involved, as students gained the skills needed to serve and lead their school community and the world beyond. Our high schools continually offer college and career options for students to explore after graduation. Woodside High School hosted a college and career expo for their juniors and seniors. Organized by the College and Career Specialist and the Woodside Counseling Department, 400 students spoke with representatives from several universities, military branches, and local businesses, offering current and seasonal jobs to high school students. For the seventh year, this annual expo provided Woodside students with the information and resources to pursue excellence beyond their high school years. And for the third year, Menchville High School hosted their Mega On-Site College and Career Night. The evening event was open to all students in Newport News, with over 300 students and parents attending. Organized by Menchville's Guidance Department, the massive event offered college exploration, onsite acceptance, seasonal and long-term career opportunities, and financial aid support. With over 50 college and career representatives in attendance, students and families had a wealth of resources to explore. During the event, over 60 students interviewed with the 14 colleges offering onsite acceptance, and over 50 acceptance offers were extended to seniors that very evening. A student athlete from Menchville High School continues to impact the cross-country community in a big way. Luke Gier passed away in 2020 from a rare form of cancer at the age of 16. Luke was a passionate runner who loved his Menchville cross-country team. And since his passing, the nonprofit foundation created in his honor, Luke's Legacy, has made great strides to support student athletes at Menchville with scholarships and new uniforms. But this fall season, Luke's Legacy expanded their impact by offering a VHSL-approved Last Chance Invitational to all runners, which took place in late October at Newport News Park. Luke's Legacy partnered with Menchville High School and Newport News Public Schools to give runners one more chance to qualify for the upcoming regional and state meets. 130 runners attended the inaugural race, representing 10 schools from Newport News, Hampton Roads, and as far as Richmond. A caring team of volunteers, coaches, and runners created a wonderful invitational full of excitement and energy. It also gave Luke's friends, teammates, and coaches a chance to come together to honor Luke's legacy, as it continues to bless runners and student athletes in amazing ways. Newport News Public Schools invited students and families to tour all of the specialized learning environments available during a magnet and specialty program preview. The evening event took place at Gilder Sleeve Middle School, with magnet and specialty programs sharing their unique curriculums and career-centric learning opportunities. As families explored the range of possibilities, they were able to talk directly with highly-trained educators, many of whom have worked in the career fields they now teach. They were also able to interact with students currently enrolled in each program and enjoyed hands-on activities and engaging demonstrations. Located at schools and learning sites across Newport News, students are welcome to apply to any magnet and specialty program that interests them. Once accepted, transportation will be provided, giving students access to a focused curriculum that serves their interests and career goals. The week before Thanksgiving, Ivy Baptist Church hosted their annual Thanksgiving Community Dinner at Heritage High School. For 15 years, Ivy Baptist has been sharing love, hope, and compassion by not only feeding bodies, but by nurturing hearts and souls as well through this festive tradition. All were welcome to attend, with over 670 people joining in fellowship. Ivy's volunteers and staff really cooked up a storm, lovingly preparing and serving over 960 warm meals this year. Heritage students who participate in Youth Volunteer Corps, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, Student Ambassadors, and SCA all lent a helping hand by volunteering their time during the dinner. And a dozen community partners shared valuable resources for families and individuals to utilize. Pastor Kevin Swan and a thankful school board expressed their heartfelt gratitude to the volunteers, students, and staff who gave a community much to be thankful for this season.
...month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. I will be doing them in sets of three to see if we can move along and get us captured in 30 minutes. Reverend Natalie Chamberlain will be first. Sharon Martin and Dale Minton will be second, and Jackie Batterson will be third. Hello.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain. My pronouns are she and her. I'm part of a broad coalition of citizens who have been attending these meetings for over a year now. We support the equality and the respectful treatment of all the children, including trans and other LGBTQIA+ youth in the district. Tonight, I'm here as Pastor Natalie. It's the season of Advent, Christmas, and Epiphany. From conversations I've had with some of you, I feel certain that most, if not all, of you will be celebrating this season. I find it ironic that a body of people, some of whom have publicly stated that their Christian faith informs their work on this board, would not make this a season of acting in the name and likeness of Christ. By that, I mean, why are you not caring most especially for the most vulnerable of your students? I'm not advocating a religion-based approach to education. I'm asking why. Since you've claimed a religious faith, you're not protecting the trans students in your care. As we continue to look at the uncertainties of the year ahead, I pray that in this season of Christmas, that you find time to reflect and to be present with the people you love most, and that that time will give you the strength and the peace to do what it is you've been called to do, and to do it in a way that treats all people with the kind of respect that comes with being children of the living God. Merry Christmas.
Sharon Martin and Dale Ming- Mingleton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairperson Cyril Laws, Vice Chair West, members of the school board, and Superintendent Dr. Mitchell. I am Sharon Martin with Old Point National Bank, but also the Chair of the Newport News Education Foundation Board. I'm sure you have already heard, but in case you haven't, I'm here to let you know that the Newport News Education Foundation is the recipient of the 2024 Accelerating Change Together Act, which is a grant in the amount of $500,000. The grant is funded by Bayport Credit Union, Ferguson, Virginia Natural Gas, and Newport News Shipbuilders. The grant is paid out over two years to support the New Teachers Institute that is managed by your very own Dr. Angela Rett. This grant will assist the Newport News Public School Division in giving them the ability to continue to grow our own teachers. As you all know, hiring and retaining teachers continues to be an ongoing challenge, not only for Newport News Public Schools, but across the nation. This grant will not solve the problem, but it will help to minimize the loss of great teachers. December 10th was a very exciting day for Newport News Education Foundation and Newport News Public Schools. We were told that the committee wanted to visit Watkins Early Childhood Center and see the New Teacher Institute program in operation. We met them there, expecting to discuss the program, but instead we were given a big check for a half a million dollars. We should have known something was up when the ACT committee said they were bringing cameras. There are many people who contributed to helping us receive the grant, especially Dr. Angela Rett and her incredible team. Elizabeth Jackson, our former grant writer and now manager of grants for the city of Newport News, did a great job in completing the necessary documentation to promote the program to the ACT committee. Dale Mingleton, our executive director, also did a great job in helping promote the grant. Thank you to Dr. Mitchell, Dr. West, and Newport News Education Board of Directors that attended the event, and to our board in general for all the work that they do to support the schools. Thank you to the ACT committee, Bayport Credit Union, Ferguson, Virginia Natural Gas, and Newport News Shipbuilders for choosing the Newport News Education Foundation as their second recipient of this prestigious grant. We look forward to additional partnership opportunities with Newport News Public Schools to support our students, teachers, and families. Thank you.
And I will just say on behalf of the board, thank you so much for being part of the solution. We appreciate you. We have Jackie Batterson. After Jackie, we'll have Jim Batterson, and then Dorothy Kelly, and then Jennifer Leatherbury.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Batterson, and I'm a resident of Newport News. If you have been paying attention to what is happening in this country right now, including our state, you are aware that the LGBTQIA+ community, and in particular, the trans community, is under attack. These are our children, neighbors, friends, the person who takes your order at a restaurant, the person who checks you out at the grocery. And as a professional nurse for 46 years, I can assure you that the nurse who cared for you in the hospital and possibly saved your life is part of this community. The Newport News school system does not have to be a participant in the travesty that is occurring. The Trevor Project reports that feeling accepted by an adult, the odds of a young person attempting suicide are significantly lowered by more than 40%. This is where this school system can help these students by allowing open communication between school employees and students. I'm going to read a poem by Lana P. Raffiella, and I am dedicating it to the LGBTQIA+ students and staff of the school system. I think it's brave that you get up in the morning, even if your soul is weary and your bones ache for a rest. I think it's brave that you keep on living, even if you don't know how anymore. I think it's brave that you push away the waves rolling in every day, and you decide to fight yet again. I know there are days when you feel like giving up, but I think it is brave that you never do. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Batterson. Previous board chair for Newport News Public Schools. Thank you.
So for the past several months, I've visited and brought you information. Lastly, the report from the CDC, which talks about trans versus cis students and the issues that trans students have. They're two to five times more likely to attempt suicide, two to five times more likely to be bullied at school, and not have stable housing and so forth. So they're, these are all self-identified transgender students or students who question their gender. So in the very restrictive definition of transgender student that came out of Richmond that this board adopted in its procedure does not take care of those kids. And so I have taken the liberty of doctoring up the procedure, JBP. And so if you'll just go through it with me quickly tonight, these are some changes you can make that would take care of the some 400 estimated kids in Newport News who are not being served under the current definition. So if you go down to paragraph H, transgender is a self-identifying term. That's what you've always had. Oh, and things that I've removed, deleted, or have a strike-through and things I've added are underlined in traditional form of policy changes. in traditional form of policy changes. So, instead of having one definition of a transgender student, I've added a second sub-paragraph for the transgender child, who is a Newport News Public School student who self-identifies in his gender different from the sex assigned at birth. So, this will take care of all those children who are not in the over eighteen, not in the emancipated minor, and whose parents didn't ask you to make a change for them. So, it's a new category. The next page, I've added the transgender child to paragraph one. In paragraph two, that business goes away, and we say school division personnel should refer to each student using the name and pronouns that that student prefers. I mean, the state is dictating in a very Anglophilic way, Anglocentric way, what names can be used to a school division here in Newport News, which has over sixteen hundred ESL students. Different cultures, different languages, different names. In the next paragraph, we also have that the pronouns should be used, should be the students' preference. And then, the rest of it, as I read it, and I'm a student of policy from Mr. Wallen, and I wasn't a very good student, I'm afraid, but as I read it, it looks to me like teachers do not have to report to parents any conversations they have with students. And if that's the case, I hope it will remain that way, that teachers and adults in the schools can serve as help and aid and adult sounding boards for our children who may not have that help at home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dorothy Kelly.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Kelly. I am a resident and a parent here in Newport News City Schools. I have one child who graduated, and I have another one who is going through middle school right now. All of you at some point have had at least one email from me, possibly several. And I'm really frustrated because I'm watching my student, my son, not have access to class time that is productive and learning. And when his teacher, a very bright, energetic, enthusiastic, and inspired young man, tries to schedule time outside of the bell to help his students get the instructional time he doesn't get to give them during the school day, very, very frequently, he has to cancel because of lack of transportation or coordination for facilities. My student attends Huntington Middle School. He's in the band program. When he was in sixth grade, Newport News City Schools did not have a band instructor for him. He missed an entire year of instruction because there was no teacher available. They tried to use one of the high school teachers who had a conflict, a conflict in scheduling and wasn't able to do it. And so, they put my son in choir instead of in band. He didn't get that year of education. He got a different subject. Similar, but not the same. They had a teacher for him last year. They have a teacher for him this year. But the amount of instructional time that he gets in a classroom is extremely limited because of the time it takes for young students to get an instrument out, put it together, set themselves up, and get ready to receive instruction. And then, when you consider how much time it takes for them to then disassemble their instruments, put them away, and store them properly, because many of them are rented or borrowed instruments and not their own, the amount of time left in the every other day of instruction that they get is minimalistic. So, when Mr. Dorian Black schedules practice after school, and then there's no place for him to hold his practice or no transportation for the students due to other events and other things, it is extremely frustrating. And on that note, I would like to invite every single one of you and everyone in the audience to come out to Huntington, which is, their campus is shared by heritage. Come out to Huntington Middle School and watch the band concert tomorrow and see what the lack of instruction has done for these students despite Mr. Black's efforts.
We have Jennifer Leatherbury, and then Connor Collins, Yvonne Bate, and Eric. I think this is Burton. I think that's a U. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Mitchell. Thank you for your continued service to our city schools. My name is Jennifer Leatherbury. I'm a resident of Newport News and a mother of a fifth grader at one of the Newport News Elementary Schools. I would like to request that the school board explain to the teachers, students, and parents why the city purchased a brand-new curriculum for this school year and forced it on the schools shortly before the beginning of the school year. From my understanding, the curriculum that the district already had was developed by the teachers of the district, and thousands of hours were spent making sure it would meet- were deemed not accurate. But by the time they took the test, they were told to skip questions, just because the district said so, in the words of my daughter. My daughter received an advanced score on her SOLs last year in reading in fourth grade, but currently has a D in reading this quarter. This is the case for the majority of her classmates and students throughout the district. It is causing them to be discouraged and uninterested in learning. The math curriculum seems to focus more on teaching students how to use a calculator than actually knowing math skills. Anything done in elementary school should not require the use of a calculator, in my opinion. But I often have to use one to help my daughter with her math homework. Some of the worksheets provided by the district for both math and science have either been wrong or way above skill level of a fifth grader. My husband, who is an engineer, had to help our daughter with equations on an assignment because they wanted the students to use math skills they had not learned yet. I've tried to find something online to see how much this disaster has cost the taxpayers of Newport News, but was not successful. However, it seems that buying this awful curriculum has caused the district to be unable to afford to give staff a holiday bonus this year. Thank you.
Connor Collins.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Mitchell, members of the board. My name is Connor Collins. I am a ten-year teacher here at Newport News Public Schools, member of the Newport News Education Association, and chairperson of our Organizing to Bargain Committee. I'm here today to give you an update on our collective bargaining campaign here in Newport News Public Schools as we close out the calendar year for two thousand twenty-four. Newport News Public Schools is approaching fifty percent plus one, the majority of employees who have signed a card asking for collective bargaining rights. We have multiple sites from early childhood, elementary, middle, high school, transportation, custodial staff, nutrition, as well as planned services that have well over the majority, approaching seventy percent, and in some schools, eighty percent of their employees have signed a card asking for collective bargaining rights. Having collective bargaining is something that makes Newport News Public Schools attractive to the area. We would be the first school division in Hampton Roads to grant us the right to contract, negotiate our contract with you, the members of the board. School divisions that have collective bargaining have better working conditions for their employees, have more collaborative leadership, have higher teacher retention, have improved classroom instruction and SOL performance, and have improved school safety, all through the collaborative work between the collective bargaining team, which would be Newport News Education Association, and the Board of Newport News Public Schools. I am confident that NMPS will be the first in the region to have a collective bargaining resolution passed due to our collaborative working conditions between yourselves and the Newport News Education Association. We've seen that Williamsburg, James City County has attempted, but unfortunately, they were not able to get that passed. But Newport News Public Schools will be the leader in Hampton Roads again in setting the stage for collective bargaining, not just for the region, the state, and the nation as a whole. Thank you.
Yvonne Bate.
School board members and Dr. Mitchell, my name's Yvonne Batea. I am a, um, excuse me, I'm an assistant on the bus, school bus. I was a driver for twenty-plus years. I'm a veteran, my grandmother, and all that stuff right there. But I'm up here to talk about why, when I was, um, when I had to get off the school bus and become an assistant, I was here in June, and I talked about the same thing. I have not got anything resolved. I have not seen policies that say that when you become unable to do your job at hand and you have to step down, which I don't think is a step down because the bus driver and the aide work hand-in-hand. They both are important jobs. You see what I'm saying? Taking, getting five dollars taken from my pay erased all my, all my raises that I had in those twenty-plus years. Driving a, ace, driving a bus with no AC, with one hundred and ten degrees, with a heat index, with children being rowdy on the bus, with parents cussing you out, the whole thing that comes along with it. People might say, well, that's your job. That's your job. I understand my job. I love driving. My driving is a job. But when I couldn't do it any longer, to get five dollars taken from my pay is like a slap in the face. That's six hundred dollars a month. That's, that's just the base. The base we are guaranteed is thirty hours a week. That's what we are guaranteed. From that base right there, that in ten months is six thousand dollars. In three years, it's eighteen thousand dollars. If I was to do the forty-plus, that's twenty-four thousand dollars taken from me. But then turn around and we get a raise of three percent, that's seventy cents for me. So, you take five dollars from me, and not just me, other drivers, and give me seventy cents as a what? And then you wonder why there's no drivers. Yes, we understand our job. The job is not hard. Because if the job is hard, you wouldn't have people working forty and thirty in twenty-five, fifteen years doing this job. It's the stuff that come along with it. Drivers are looked down upon by everybody. No one likes the school bus driver. They like when we take the kids away. They don't like when we bring them back. But we're, as a collective group, they're tired. You got drivers driving three and four runs out of one school before, it used to be, you drive one school, you drive one, um, um, run out of high school, one out of middle, and one out of elementary. Now, it's two and three out of one school, then, you're so full of, when you get to the, when you get to the middle school, I mean, the elementary school, them babies are there to almost dark because they don't have any drivers. The drivers are not robots. The drivers are not lazy. The drivers are not being put to fun. Everybody talks about the teachers, and we love our teachers, but no one's talking about the drivers. You know what I'm saying? And we feel, we feel like we don't, we don't matter to not just, not just the public, but to our own workforce, to our own people. Thank you.
Eric Burton, and after Eric will be Gabriel Marquez, Reverend Michael Burnett, and Charles Jones.
Good afternoon. I'm coming up here today as an employee of Newport News Public School System. I am a key driver for the school system, working transportation. I'm also on the executive board for the Newport News Public, no, I'm sorry, Newport News Education Association. I'm up here talking today about the cell phone policy that's coming up. The current one that's coming up that has been imposed is bell-to-bell. One issue that we have been dealing with recently is dealing with cell phones with FaceTiming and live streaming of video onto social media or other platforms. The current policy in there states that you cannot record any video or audio of other students or staff on property and then post it onto anywhere. But when you have parents that are asking their child to livestream video and audio from events or on school buses, it's negating our safety practices and our safety procedures that we have in place that prevent parents from knowing who the other student may be in altercation. So, then that student now is getting targeted at bus stops when they get off. So, now we're not just driving the school buses. Now, we're having these security guards on these school buses to stop these kids from getting jumped or getting beat up by parents or gang members. We just had a situation where we had a bus driver call in and say, hey, I'm gonna take this kid to their house. I need to know what their address is because they are on the phone with a gang, and they said they got weapons at the bus stop, and they had to take this child home in order to prevent this student from getting jumped. And this is happening on a daily basis, mostly on our middle school and high school levels, but it is happening all the time, and it's increasing. The FaceTiming and livestreaming on Discord is increasing quite a bit. And they're using this as a get-around of our current policy because the current policy does not state anything about live streaming. It just states that you cannot record and post. Thank you.
Gabriel Marquez.
Yes, good evening to the board and to the Honorable Chair, Ms. Searls Law. My name is Gabriel Marquez, though I'm sure many of you know me by now. I'm speaking on behalf of the Tiewater Chapter of the DSA this evening, of which I am a co-chair. I'm here to speak in solidarity with the LGBTQ community and all other oppressed minorities around the world. I have no eloquent words to say or statistics to cite, as others have already explicitly stated. I'd like to just remind the board that citizens are so greatly concerned about Policy JB and Procedure JBP, which unfairly targets the trans community, and humbly ask that the board prioritize addressing our collective concerns. Each month that passes with no resolution means another month of abuse that some of the most marginalized members of our community must endure. I've said it once, and I'll say it again. What we have right now in our schools is a system of segregation, and it's one that can only get worse if we don't act now, especially with the current social-political climate. Thank you all for your consideration and your time. Thank you.
Reverend Michael Burnett.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Mitchell, members of the board, it's good to see you again. I know I haven't been here in a few months. My name is Reverend Michael Burnett, and I'm here on behalf of concerned souls spanning the spectrum of human expression and in the interest of students and staff in Newport News Public Schools whose humanity, safety, and liberty are jeopardized by Policy JBP as it currently stands. We've been having this conversation for over a year now. We've heard from concerned parties largely on two discernible sides and largely advocating for either the wholesale adoption of the new governor's model policies as we have or a wholesale rollback to the previous administration's policies. Now, I understand the concern of parents who feel that the previous policies shut them out of their children's lives. I understand the concern of educators who feel they might be being asked to go against their conscience by being forced to refer to students by names which they've never heard. But I may maintain my position that the current model policies swing the pendulum too far in the other direction, violating the privacy of students and in fact equally stifling the freedom of freedom of expression of our educators by effectively forbidding them from using students' chosen names and pronouns where they were previously required to. And here, I'd speak specifically on Section Three, Subsection D, Paragraphs Three and Four. I recognize that this pendulous motion is a symptom of the over politicization of our civic institutions. I know this is the nature of the proverbial beasts, and I wish it were not so. I'm not here to garner victory for any particular political party- I'm not here to garner victory for any particular political party organization. I'm not here on behalf of any ideology. And so I don't think a wholesale rollback of JBP to the previous administration's model policies is necessary. Or even the most helpful course of action, but I do think some modifications to the existing policy are in order. Like Jim, I have set before you a more complete proposal for revision. You've probably seen this before. It's my understanding that it's been before you in your email inbox since about September. I can only hope that these revisions have been under your consideration during this time and that they have not been dismissed. Obviously, I don't have the time to go through them all in the forty seven seconds I have remaining. But at the very least, let me emphasize that the deletion of section three subsection A paragraphs three and four. As well as section three subsection D paragraphs two through seven would serve best to reduce harm. Without infringing upon parental rights. I do think there is a compromise to be had here. I hope you carefully, mindfully and prayerfully consider these proposed revisions. As a means not only of making peace among opposed factions of your citizenry. But more importantly, as a means of safeguarding both the well-being and liberty of your students and your staff. Thank you.
Charles Jones.
Good afternoon. My name's Charles Jones. I'm a bus, I'm a bus driver with Newport News. My concern is mistreatment of bus drivers. When I say mistreat- mistreatment. You pay being short. You uh, we uh, be on the job more than we get paid. We can't go and do anything that we want to do because we got to stay on the property to wait. To do our job. You got people coming in from outside with just driving experience. Some of us have left and come back and have experience that is not recognized. When back in Co- when COVID was here, Newport News came up with a solution to keep the drivers. They raised the price of you and of your hourly pay. At that time. I was denied my experience, but they went to other cities and brought people in. Hired them over what I was making. That is one of my main concerns. The other one is. When I work, I expect to get my pay when payday is due, not a month later. I've been short of my pay several times. But I had to wait a month to get that money back, if I got it back. This is what I wanted to address to you all. And I appreciate y'all listening to what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for sharing their comments and thoughts this evening. We will have another comment section at the end of tonight's meeting. Uh, we'll move on now to section three, the consent agenda, which includes three point zero one minutes from the special meeting. November nineteen twenty twenty four, three point zero two minutes from the regular meeting, November nineteenth twenty twenty four. Three point zero three financial reports, including the revenue and expense reports for November twenty twenty four. Child nutrition reports for November twenty twenty four. Three point zero four personnel report, three point zero five, the MOU. Emergency student relocation and reunification, three point zero six budget transfer. Three point zero seven donation agreement USA and Newport News Public Schools. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Four.
Four.
The mic wasn't on. Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We will now move to section four. We have action items this evening. Four point zero one, proposed legislative, uh, FY twenty five legislative program. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If you recall, last month Pat Finneran came before you. To present the proposed legislative plan. He is here today in the event that you um, have any questions. I know you've had the opportunity to review. If you have any questions for Mr. Finneran, he is here at this time.
Board members, are there any questions before we proceed? Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the proposed FY twenty five legislative program as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion?
Thank you.
The Seaman, I'm sorry.
No problem. No problem. Thank you. I just want to say, um, you know, although I, I do agree with much of what's in it, there are a couple, there are a few things. I'm not sure I agree with, but I do think on the odds, there's more in it that I, I agree with than not, so I'll be voting for it.
Thank you. Any others? All right, please call the roll.
Aiman.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to four point zero two. We have new and revised policies. I know, Dr. Mitchell, we are gonna have a recap of one particular policy for the evening.
Yes, we are. If you recall, last month, Ms. Tracy Brooks came before you to present the proposed JCIB cell phone. Policy. Ms. Brooks is here tonight to give you a update and a recap. Thank you so much, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Members of the Board and Dr. Mitchell. At your November School Board meeting, I shared a new policy proposal that we developed in response to the Governor's Executive Order. For cell phone free education across the state. Over the past four weeks, we received comments through our public comment notice and our survey of parents and staff. Most of whom were in support of the new policy being proposed. So for a quick review, our draft policy restricts the use of cell phones and personal communication devices such as Apple Watches from bell to bell. As defined in the state guidelines, which means from the time the first bell rings at the start of the school day. To begin instructional time until the dismissal bell rings at the end of the academic day. Bell to bell includes the time between class periods and in most cases lunch as well. But we are proposing an exception to allow high school students to use their devices during lunch. Which is different from the state guidance. The new policy also requires students to keep cell phones and personal electronic devices in their backpacks. And not carried on the student's person like in the student's pocket or worn on the student's wrist in the case of smart. Smart watches or around the student's neck for headphones or earbuds. The policy continues to allow students to use their cell phones before and after the instructional day. Now, as I just mentioned, we are recommending that high school students be allowed to use their cell phones and other devices. During the lunch period in response to input from senior staff, principals, students. And the division-wide survey in support of developing students' digital citizenship. For example, our career-ready students may have rules about specific times for cell phone use in their future workplaces. And this will prepare them for learning how to plan accordingly. Allowing cell phone use at lunch also provides an opportunity for high school students who are currently working. To connect to their jobs if needed. And on a personal note, it allows students the opportunity to manage their responsibilities. From doctor's appointments to last minute arrangements to care for a sibling. And while our high school administrators believe that we currently have adequate coverage for our lunch periods. If lunchtime is included in the bell to bell time period. They anticipate the need for additional staff in high school cafeterias for monitoring purposes. And enforcement issues regarding the number of referrals that may occur if cell phones are no longer allowed. So in summary, the new cell phone policy proposal before you for action this evening. Prohibits students from using their cell phones and other personal electronic devices during the instructional day with one exception. And that's for high school students who may use their cell phones during the lunch period. It allows students to use their cell phones before and after the instructional day. And it requires students to store their devices in their backpacks and not on their person. So this concludes my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any questions after this update?
I think I would just like to ask if we had any feedback besides the board meeting, any feedback from community members on the proposed. Cell phone policy and if that, if you have a general idea of what that was.
Yes, we had, um, there are, I guess, two or three themes that emerged. Um, cell phone use should, from the survey, um, most of our respondents said that they should be allowed in schools for the following reasons. For emergencies that may arise in school, for communication after school and for the ride to and from school. They also uh, expressed support that cell phones should be turned off in the student's backpack during the instructional day. And there was also support for cell phone use at lunch and most of whom said at the high school level.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Alger.
Yes, um, I just, um, in terms of the procedures, uh, that will be something that is handled. Obviously by the school, uh, by the district division, that's right, by the superintendent's office. And so one of the things that I, I feel strongly about is making sure that, um, that guidelines are definitely explicit. On regarding the use and the consequences, um, that are applied and especially with consistency. And the other part too, that, um, making sure that as, uh, the administration that we do. The heavy lifting as far as the communication piece, um, simply because this is not. This is a Newport News, uh, cell phone policy that we're discussing, um. And making sure that it applies to every school with no exception.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to provide that, uh, uh, feedback. I, I definitely, um, feel that it's, you know, I support it. And I also want to add to the list another reason, um, because I, I really thought deeply about this, um, with everything that. You know, the experiences that Heritage, Menchfield and Richneck went through in terms of the trauma. Cell phones are a, a direct line of communication, you know, we know when it comes to safety. Um, and they also have the potential to alert authorities, uh, when something is seen or heard. And especially with, at the high school level, for the kids to have access during lunch period. Uh, there are many positives, I, I, I believe to that.
Thank you. Definitely make note.
Well, I think, um, we do have several policies that we're going to vote on this evening. Um, this one, I have it in a block, but I'm gonna remove it from the block and do this particular, um, policy individual. So if I can get a motion.
Madam Chair, prior to you making that motion, if I can also add and commend our staff. Our teachers have done a great job. We have been moving in this direction all year and I will say that, um. If you've had the opportunity to visit our high schools in particular, and I see Mr. Brown shaking his head because we were together at Heritage yesterday. You do not see cell phones. Um, our teachers have been supported by administration. We had a teacher from Denby High School. To email Ms. Brooks to talk about the fact that her administrators had really taken the heavy lifting for them. And that students' grades had increased, their engagement had increased as well. So I just want to commend. Not only the students, but the administrators in each of our high schools have really, that have really done a, a very nice job. In assisting, um, us with moving this, um, expectation along.
Okay, thank you for that addition. So do we have a motion for JCIB student cell phone use?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve, um, policy JCIB student cell phone use.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Aiman. Any discussion? Mr. Brown.
Just make a, a administrative comment first. I think, or at least in the agenda, it's listed as J I C B.
I'm sorry, you're right. It's JCIB. My apologies.
Or you have, uh, the motion said J, the motion said JCIB and it's listed as J I C B.
Oh, I have it here as JCIB, so. Satisfy both.
Ms. Brooks, it should be J I.
J I C B.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then, and then my comment is, uh, I won't, because we have lots of things to vote on tonight, so I won't, uh, belabor this particular topic. Really appreciate all the work that's gone into, uh, the development of this policy and the operational work that has gone to into supporting. The policy before it's even implemented. As was mentioned, you can already see a real difference in the schools. Um, and, and the kids, for the most part, the students are reacting very positively to not having their cell phones. I think. They logically can understand the reasons why, um, it was detrimental to their education. And so in light of that, I think this, it's a great policy except for the one sentence that says with the exception of lunchtime and that's my reason for being against it. Um, is that, I, you know, it's, it's great, why didn't we just go all the way? But, you know, you, you're almost there.
All right. Any other comments? Ms. Aiman.
Sure, um, I have some hesitation. I had some hesitation on that as well. But I also, um, you know, in hearing how the administration and the high school leadership. Who came together and talked about pros and cons and, you know, how the staffing would work. And also the feedback from the community being in support of this, as much as, um, you know, on the one side, we'd love to track the recommendation completely. I think for our division, we've thought through it to see what's practically gonna work. And if it doesn't, we can always revisit this, um, but I'm going to support it because I want to support. What the administration and the school leadership teams have thought through and also the community's feedback on this issue.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Aiman.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Against.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes six one.
Thank you. Right, our next set of policies are policies that support Newport News Public Schools' best practices. Do I have a motion for these two polish, policies?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve policy ABD, drug-free schools and policy IHBG, home instruction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just make the one commentary that in, in relation to, we talk about scope creep and keeping the main thing the main thing. I think that as a division and as a board, we should really be focused, uh, pretty much solely on education. And what I see in ADB is a creeping of focus on what is the role of law enforcement as opposed to a focus on education. I think it's the, it's law enforcement's role to determine, uh, if someone has broken the law by being intoxicated in some manner or form. And there's child protective services, et cetera. There's various agencies that take care of these additional community concerns. And that we, we as a school division, if we get sucked into, uh, multiple community concerns, then we look up and we're wondering how. How is it that we're unable to move nimbly on to education? So for those reasons, I think that, um, ADB has the wrong focus for us.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Aiman.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Against.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes six one.
Thank you. Next we'll have a set of policies. Next we'll have a set of policies related to foundations and basic commitments. We have seven policies in this category.
Madam Chair, I move to approve policy A A, school division legal status, policy A B, the people and their school division, policy A C A, service animals in school facilities, A D C, tobacco and nicotine vapor products free schools, A D D, safe schools, A D G, sexual misconduct and abusing, and abuse affecting students, and A F, comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Amon. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Amon?
For.
Best?
For.
Brown?
For.
Harris?
For.
Hunter?
For.
Alger?
For.
Searl's Law?
For.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. The next set of policies are those in foundations and basic commitments chapter, and they're related to the development of the school's division's new strategic plan, twenty thirty. There are four policies in this block. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve policy A D, educational philosophy slash school division mission and business, vision statements, policy A D A, school division goals and objectives, policy A D E, effective schools, and policy A E, accountability, commitment to accomplishment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any conversation?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In relation to this set of policies, um, what I would suggest or offer up is that as, once we adopt our, uh, strategic plan twenty thirty, that that would be the right time to review these policies, uh, and to see which ones are most relevant or what types of changes we would want to make to these policies. I think that adopting them tonight is premature, and for those who would say, well, we can go back and re-adopt, no, we can't because on the motion on the floor, we'll delete policy A E, so there won't be a chance to go back and redo this. And so I just think it's, uh, in our better interest to work on our strategic plan first, and then come back and, uh, adopt this, uh, set of, uh, revisions to this set of policies, uh, as it relates to our strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments?
So this is regarding policy A E, so it, it states that propose to delete policies since information is contained in other policies. Is that correct? Okay. So it hasn't been deleted, it's just been transferred, right? Am I correct in saying?
That was my understanding, is that it was transferred.
Into other.
If the motion is successful, it'll be deleted.
But it's deleted because it's been transferred into other policies, embedded, in other words.
So basically a redundancy, is the way I understood it, is that it's more of a redundant policy.
That's how I read into it. Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure. Is it embedded in other policies is basically what the?
And quick question, are there notes on which other policies that's embedded in? Do you by any chance have that?
You guys discussed that in policy committee?
Yeah, that it would be embedded in another policy, but I can't tell you right offhand.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? Please call the roll. Amon?
Against.
Best?
For.
Brown?
Against.
Harris?
For.
Hunter?
For.
Alger?
For.
Searl's Law?
For.
Motion carries five two. And our last set for this evening are policies related to education agency relations. We have six policies in this block. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve policies L B, relations with other schools, the, school divisions and agencies, policy L C, local charter schools, policy L D, relations with colleges and universities, policy L F, relations with education research agencies, policy L H, relations with education accreditation agencies, and policy L I, professional visitors and observers.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Amon?
For.
Best?
For.
Brown?
For.
Harris?
For.
Hunter?
For.
Alger?
For.
Searl's Law?
For.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, thank you to the policy team and their fearless leader, and, uh, and to the board for reading your patterns. It's very important for us to be able to have these conversations. Okay, we are at five point zero four, the attendance report, five point zero five, the membership report. I think I'm skipping something. I'm skipping the presentations, I'm sorry. I knew that, I knew they were there, I got the, right in front of me. I'm sorry, W H R O, really. So we will move on to section five, reports and information. And we have five point oh one first, W H R O presentation. Dr. Mitchell, would you please introduce our visitor?
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. Tonight we have Mr. Bert Schmidt and Mr. Elmer Stewart from W H R O. They were gonna come to us today to talk about information regarding the annual impact statement. And I do want to share to our audience, as well as our viewing public, in the event that you are not aware, W H R O is a public media organization that provides radio, television, and online content for eastern Virginia and northeastern North Carolina. Tons of resources for educators, students, and families.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Mitchell, members of the board. My name is Bert Schmidt. I'm the president and CEO of W H R O. With me is Elmer Stewart, my vice president of education, so if you have hard questions, I got backup. Um, I come to you a, as, uh, Dr. Mitchell said, because you're one, one of the twenty-one school divisions that literally own the license to W H R O. We're the only media company in the entire country owned by collaboration of K, K twelve school divisions. We come together regularly, and we do things as a group rather than doing them twenty-one different times, thereby saving taxpayers money and improving the services for all of our students throughout the region. We provide you annually with this report. It's customized to the division. I'm not going to go through it now because, well, I've got something better. We're W H R O, we've got a video that we're going to show you. So with that cue, we'll play the video.
...owned by a collaboration of twenty-one school divisions. This distinctive ownership model places education at the heart of our mission, of our work. Our team of educators is committed to offering students, teachers, and families innovative, free, high-quality programs and services. One key service that W H R O offers is E Media V A, Virginia's leading digital content repository. With nearly one hundred thousand free, top-quality instructional resources, E Media V A provides educators and students with videos, interactive tools, games, lesson plans, images, and more. This platform is designed to enhance personalized learning and make classroom experiences more engaging. For our youngest learners, W H R O offers exciting educational activities to spark their imagination. Our three education vans visit elementary schools with programs tailored to Virginia's standards of learning, covering literacy, numeracy, scientific investigation, and technology. We also support parents and caregivers, ensuring children are prepared for kindergarten and set up for success in their early school years. For secondary educators, W H R O provides a catalog of twenty-seven award-winning, customizable online courses and digital resources. These media-rich, S O L-aligned courses are designed to integrate seamlessly with various learning management systems. They offer flexibility for face-to-face, flipped, blended, and fully online teaching environments, enriching lessons with engaging content. At W H R O, we celebrate student achievements through competitions that showcase their talents. The Great Computer Challenge, for example, gathers school teams from across the region at Old Dominion University to tackle real-world technology problems. Another highlight is our regional spelling bee, where middle school champions compete at W H R O's studio for a chance to advance to the Scripps National Spelling Bee. The local competition is recorded and aired on W H R O each April. Elementary students also have an opportunity to shine through our PBS Kids Writers Contest. This competition invites young writers to craft and illustrate their original stories, fostering creativity and critical thinking. Our student advisory board reflects our commitment to student engagement. This group of high school students offers feedback on W H R O's content and has opportunities to create their own, influencing our online courses and E Media V A resources. We're equally devoted to supporting educators through our professional development programs. Our workshops and training sessions provide teachers with cutting-edge strategies and tools, empowering them to inspire and guide their students effectively. Visit W H R O's education webpage to learn more about how these amazing free materials, programs, and resources can benefit you. At W H R O Public Media, we're proud to partner with our local school divisions and the Virginia Department of Education to shape the future of education, one student at a time.
That's more fun than listening to me. As school board members, you care about how taxpayers' monies are being spent. On page fourteen of the report summarizes that report, that, that funding. You spent last year with W H R O ninety-two thousand dollars. You received savings in value of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's over five to one return on your investment. We hope you're happy with that, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Board members, yes?
Yeah, awesome question. That was a good, and very interesting video. I like, that's fun to have a break from recent PowerPoints. Um, what, a quick question on sort of the use by educators. You know, teachers in the different divisions or in our division, you know, is that, are they accessing it? Is there, could, could they access it? You know, is there anything we can do if there's additional benefit to be?
The trick is to take this video and share it with your teachers. That's really why it was built, because we, we've been hearing from superintendents saying, you know, we talk regularly with the superintendents, they know what we're doing, but then it has to get down ultimately to the, to the user, which is the teacher and the student. So the link, the superintendent's office has the link. You can share it however you want. You've got access to it, it's on our website. So if teachers see this as well, then they're going to be aware of all the services available. And then they, they can pick and choose what's appropriate for them.
I just, I just want to make a comment. I, I want to thank you and the entire organization for the work. I've seen it uh, grow over the years, and it's been excellent. Um, and I just hope that teachers are taking advantage, you know, of it across, um, really, across all divisions, because, um, I know there's a lot of work put into this.
Yeah, and, and usage is customized in the report, like, we get some details, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday, great New Year. Thanks.
Take care. Okay, we have one more report. So it's letting, I'm letting them depart if they need to. So we have five point zero two, um, F Y twenty-five, twenty-six, new course proposal. Dr. Mitchell, who do we have with us?
Uh, this evening we do have Mr. Darryl Pancratz. He is our executive director for teaching and learning. Um, tonight, as you know, he's going to come before you to talk about our course proposals. Every year, we look to add additional courses. Um, this is the time of year because we need to be prepared and ready for our students as they begin to select courses, believe it or not, for next year. Um, uh, in, in terms of this particular course, this will help us come in line with our surrounding districts. Our other districts already have either a course exactly the same as this course, or one that is, uh, dual credit. So again, this would help us come in line with the, the, uh, other divisions in the surrounding area.
All right, well, good evening, Madam Chair, Searl's Law, Vice Chair Dr. Terry Best, school board members, and Dr. Mitchell. Tonight, I will share course proposals for your review and approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This evening, we will look at a new course proposal, a revision of course titles, and the next steps that we plan to take. The new course being proposed is Advanced Placement African American Studies. This interdisciplinary course examines the diversity of African American experiences through direct encounters with varied sources, or varied sources. Students will explore key topics that extend from early African kingdoms to the ongoing challenges and achievements of the contemporary moment. The course does not have any prerequisites, and it is recommended for eleventh or twelfth grade students, and would be a year-long course. The Advanced Placement African American Studies course would cost approximately twelve thousand dollars to include hard copied text for each student, as well as digital access. The intention would be to offer the course at all of our high schools in the division. In addition to the new course proposal, there are two course name revisions. Currently, Chemistry and Physics One are listed as General Chemistry and General Physics One. The word general gives the perception of a course that is not at the standard level of instruction. The name change to Chemistry and Physics One will be in alignment with the course name from the Virginia Department of Education. Finally, we are working towards a complete revision of our course guide to develop a comprehensive and dynamic program of studies. The first step in the process is a comprehensive review. We'll thoroughly examine our current course offerings, objectives, and outcomes. This will help us identify gaps, redundancies, and opportunities for improvement. Next, we'll actively involve stakeholders to gather diverse perspectives. Their insights will ensure that the program reflects the shared goals and the values of our community while addressing the unique challenges and aspirations of our learners. We will streamline the structure of the course guide, simplifying layout, and organization will make it easier for students and families to navigate. Clear pathways and concise information will enhance usability and empower our students to make informed choices about their education. We are also committed to expanding advanced learning opportunities. The new program of studies will include updated information about our magnet and specialty programs, dual enrollment opportunities, advanced placement opportunities, as well as pathways for specific student interests. To su, to ensure success of the new program of studies, we'll provide a comprehensive guidance for implementation. This will include training for educators, clear communication strategies, and ongoing support. Lastly, we'll emphasize academic and career planning. Through enhanced counseling services and tools, students will have the resources they need to set goals, explore interests, and plan their pathway. This will prepare them not only for academic success, but also for meaningful careers and lifelong learning. In summary, the revision of our course guide, including each of the points previously mentioned, will create a program of studies that meets the needs of our students and our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share these proposals, and I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Board members, do you have any questions at this time? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate. We're at five point zero three, revised policies. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Tonight, we do not have a formal presentation, but the reviewed and revised policies that are currently a report item this evening are posted on board docs for your review. All of the policies except for one are from policy chapter K on school-community home relations, which supports the school board's philosophical belief that the education of students is best served through the cooperative efforts of students, families, school division staff, and community members. Most of the revisions that the policy committee made were minor edits to update and streamline the policy language, revise procedures to reflect current practices, reduce redundancy, or to make changes to staff position titles and departments. Mrs. Brooks is here tonight to answer any questions you may have, along with Mrs. Price, who was the department lead for this chapter.
Board members, do we have any questions at this time? Okay, we're at five point zero four, the attendance report, five point zero five, the membership report, and five point zero six, construction report. Board members, you have received a copy of this report. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to item five point zero seven, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Mitchell?
Good evening, and thank you again, Madam Chair. On December tenth, Bayport Credit Union. On December tenth, Bayport Credit Union, Ferguson, Newport New Ship Building, and Virginia Natural Gas, as you heard earlier, awarded a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to the Newport News Education Foundation to support Newport News Public Schools New Teacher Institute. We are very proud of our collaboration and very excited about this opportunity. On December eleventh, we hosted a joint event, Take Your Legislative to School, and a partnership signing with Riverside College of Health Sciences at Warwick High School. We invited our state legislators and local elected officials to join us for this annual event, which involves a review of the school board's priority for the general assembly session. This year, Dr. Robin El Hubel, who is, who is the president of the Riverside College of Health Sciences, and I also formalized the collaboration between Riverside and the Warwick High Governors Health Sciences Academy by signing an official agreement. Afterwards, students in the Governors Health Sciences Academy led attendees on a hands-on tour of the renovated academy's classrooms and labs. Through the Riverside Partnership, academy students will benefit from specialized clinical education support provided by Riverside faculty and gain access to clinical experiences. We do want to have, say, a special thank you to all who were in attendance, notably our school board members, as well as Senator, State Senator Danny Diggs, Delegate Shelley Simons, Delegate Chad Green, Karen Owens came from Senator Mamie Locke's office, and of course, our Riverside partners. So, it was a amazing event. Our students were exceptional in their presentations. Our fifth-grade students from every elementary school competed in our first engineering design challenge for this school year at Newsom Park Elementary, and it was called Maze Craze. That was the theme. Working in groups, students were tasked with working as laser optical engineers to design and construct a maze that directed a laser beam to a specific target. The team from Nowood Meadows Elementary School placed first, with an Achievable Dream Academy taking second place, and a third-place tie between Greenwood Elementary School and Saunders Elementary School. Special thank you to Jefferson Lab and to our Chair, Lisa Surles Law, who serves as the Science Education Manager there for partnering with Newport News Public Schools for our engineering design challenge. And last but not least, all schools and offices will be closed from December twenty-third through December third for our winter break. Monday, January the sixth is a teacher planning day, and students do not report. All students return to school Tuesday, January the seventh, and I certainly wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. We will move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. Are there any additional cards other than the ones I'm holding? Okay, we'll go with the first three. We have Sandra L. Pierce, Joyce Blow, and Lovetta Poinier, I think. I hope I didn't mess that up. Sandra Pierce. Hello.
Good evening. I was here for me from the beginning, but I've, I've learned a lot here tonight, and I have seen a lot that you do here, the committee as a whole. But it's still always come back to the bus drivers. I'm a bus driver, forty years of driving a bus. I started off in Newport News at eighty-four. I went from Newport News to Hampton. I drove HRT. I drove church buses, and I'm back here again, driving for Newport News. Ms. Best, you know me. I love kids. They are important to me. They supposed to help me once I get up in age. I'm twenty-seven. But it's so much going on in our school system today with our kids that I am mesmerized. Okay, I, I'm, right now, I'm out on, I'm working my scum because, from the beginning, and I don't complain because I love kids and I love my job. I've been hurt so many times on a school bus with no recognition or promise that I'm going to be well and doing good later on in life. But everything we do in the school system goes back to the school bus drivers. Without us, y'all have no school to educate, teach. The children can't get there. They, they don't have a way. Education is more important for us to get you, your students, than you do recognizing us and what we do. Okay, I'm out now because I injured my shoulder. I messed up my rotor disc. And my department, they couldn't care one way or the other about me hurting myself long as I could get to that school bus, long as I can work. The doctor put me out on light duty. I was sitting watching television all day. I see they lost their mind. Before, when I started out in school, driving the school bus, I started driving the school bus because they had that break in between, and I went to college for business education. Graduated, went to the job, and hated it because I was closed in. The school bus was important to me. I went back to driving the school bus. All my kids. I went back to school at fifty and graduated from high school, Warwick High School, because I was planning, you know, I was planning the system. That's okay. I got my education and got a high school diploma at fifty, walked across the stage with a cap and gown, felt prouder than anything else in this world. And you know what my teacher told me? You need to do something positive right now. Don't stop right here. Go forward. Do something else. I went back to driving the school bus. I said, must be crazy. I went to school for hair. I cooked. I do everything, but I ended up always back with the school bus. Why? Because it's children on their school bus that needs us, just like y'all need the kids to teach. And you can't get them there without the school bus drivers. Though, this year, it was the first year I ever seen that the, the, the drivers that had time in stayed home so they could get their money to retire at the end of the year. We didn't have school bus drivers. They, we have been abused, used, disrespected, and everything but...
Thank, thank you for coming and sharing.
Okay. But I, I wanted you to see what we need. We need y'all help because we're not getting it at all, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you. Joyce Blow. Yes.
Good evening. Sorry for my voice. That's partly the reason why I'm up here. I've been driving for twenty years. I suffer from allergies and asthma. The beginning of the year, I tell my students every year, I have allergies and asthma. Do not spray anything on the bus. This particular day, they decided to spray on the bus. They've been spraying since September. Since time they sprayed on the bus, I went home and I woke up and I did not have a voice. The principal came on the bus, made empty threats, telling them that she was going to take them off the bus. That never happened. I wrote several referrals, no referrals are in the, in the computer saying that I wrote a referral. I called the supervisor. She told me, we're writing a referral. I did that. So, now, I'm going to the doctor, trying to get my voice back. They had to go down my throat to tell me my vocal cords are swollen. So, very so often, I'm either talking like this or I'm talking like that. So, y'all need to implement some kind of policy so they can stop spraying on the bus because either somebody's going to have a bad allergic reaction or asthma attack in which they're going to run into somebody's house, car, or even worse. That's one thing. The second thing is, I'm going to piggyback off of her with the disrespect. It's so blatant. It's sad. I wake up in the morning, almost disappointed to come to work after being there for twenty years because the disrespect is a slap in the face. When you see new drivers come in and they treat them like they're the best thing since sliced bread, but you got drivers that's been here for twenty-five, thirty years, and they can barely get a activity or a midday, but they give the new drivers all, all the things they want in the world. That's just disrespectful. And then, why, why is it that the kids are allowed to have so much vulgar words on the bus that they say, choose your battles? That I can't even have my grandson on the bus with me because he knows those words are not said in my house, so he can't ride with me. So, I had to help his mother get a daycare provider for him. But normally, he rides the bus with me because he likes driving with his mom. That's pretty much all I have to say before my voice go out again.
Overhead of my coworkers, I am about a point, and you did say a little bit, but it's okay.
Thank you for correcting me.
It's no point, it's no problem, no problem at all. I'm going to piggyback off of my coworkers, and right now, I also am an employee with Newport News, and this is my third time coming back, and I'm currently right now on FMLA, currently. And the thing is, like my drivers, my coworkers are saying, we're all overworked, and at the end of the day, we have a lot that we go through. We have to take off adopters' appointments and everything else. But when in the policies that is implemented, thirty days, if you miss more than thirty days, you're liable to take your run. But we have drivers that has been out sick, drivers that have cancer, different illnesses, can come back, be gone two months, maybe three months, sometimes six months, and have their run. But me, in my case, I just got some paperwork the other day, yes. I'm dealing with a life-term illness. And now, I, three to four times a week, I may have dizziness, headaches, that I may have to take off because I'm under FMLA. So, my thing is, if it's good for one, why can't it be for everybody else? We all have lives, but when you're overworked, new, like she said, new drivers come in, give them everything, but there's no seniority when it comes down to the drivers that has been there, has started the foundation, held the foundation down, and did this from the get-go. Drivers that's been there twenty-plus, I've been back here the third time, like I said. And this year, if I would have stayed, I would have had twenty-two years in the system. But I have driven out of every school, out of Newport News, every one. And what I have seen, former key driver at Warwick for seven years. At the end of the day, it needs to be accountability. People need to have better communication. The kids need to be accounted for. The parents need to be accounted for, their kids, for the disrespect, and everything else, because a driver takes a lot. We are the first ones they see in the morning and the last ones they go, go home to with. It's our face first thing in the morning, and some of our runs starts before five-thirty. We're here early, and we leave late. And at the end of the day, it should be a level of respect for the bus drivers because we are the ones they see on a daily basis. It needs to be more respect for the bus drivers. Period.
The last two I have are Shamika Baker and Valerie Fashion. So, Ms. Baker, is she still here? You know, we're kind of getting kind of late tonight. Okay. Valerie Fashion, are you here?
Yes, I am.
I thought I saw you earlier.
I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Mitchell and the school board members. My name is Valerie Fashion, and I'm an advocate for my grandchildren and a thousand of children in the Newport News School District. First, thank you for all you do. And as elected officials, it is your fiduciary duty to make sure that all the students receive the best education so that they, they can become successful in life as a responsible adopt. Education is the new currency for the twenty-first century. The current curriculum, some of the grades are using today, is too rigid. The curriculum is not meeting the students where they are academically. One day, the curriculum is going over multiplication, and the next day, they're doing division. Many fourth, fifth, sixth, et cetera, students do not know their multiplication tables, which makes it very difficult for us to teach division, exponents, decimals, and fractions. Also, the tutoring program that we lead program, that's also a rigid program. One week, we are on fractions, no, one week, we are on multiplication, the next week, we are on exponents. The children just don't know the multiplication table, and you need the basics. Students and schools are sitting at regular tables because Newport News, they don't have enough desks in the system for the students to use. Students have no place to put their supplies. It's on top of a table. Lessons are being taught, paperwork's being given, and nothing goes home with these students to study. These students do not, and I repeat, do not know how to study. Parents and students never see the results of the test that they take, neither the assessments that they're taking. Students don't know what questions they got correct, and they don't know what questions they got wrong. My grandson's been in school from kindergarten to grade seven. I've never seen any assessment test come home that shows the question that he got right and the question that he has wrong. And it's very difficult for parents and grandparents and other people to help these children advance educationally without them, without them having anything to go by. A lot of times, parents don't even know what's being taught in the school. It is difficult to improve your skills if you don't know the questions you got wrong. Students and parents need to see the actual test. Another thing, that your school system stopped giving out the grades. Everybody doesn't have a computer and a printer. So, the kids are walking around school just saying what their grades are if they remember what they are. They don't have this paper in hand to look at their grades. They don't get the paper to look at the assessment test that they took. And to me, that's where we are failing. You have an agenda book you used to use. Kids don't know how to put things in order. And may thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will move on in the agenda to matters by the school board. We will begin with our student rep, Mr. Verde.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let everyone know that the second meeting of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Group was held last week with students representing all of our high schools. We have a segment where students share what's great about my school, and students from Woodside presented what was unique and special about their school. They talked about their performing arts magnet and how that perpetuates into all of their student life and activities. One of our meeting topics was also on stress and student mental health, which we discussed with Mrs. Exque and Mrs. Casey from the School Division Student Support and Mental Healthcare Services, sorry. I also attended the student representative session to the school board at the VSBA conference in November, and there, we discussed different methods of advocacy and how we can just support what we believe in. And I just wanted to share something that a few students from Fairfax County actually shared with us. They, in, over the course of a few months, managed to actually draft a bill and introduce it to the US Congress. These were eight students who went from just being eight regular high school seniors and, over the course of six to eight months, actually managed to advocate in Congress. So, you can really just do whatever, stand up for whatever you support just by standing up and actually talking about it. Sage students are looking forward to our next meeting and in January, and thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful winter break. And thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful winter break.
I'm gonna bounce back and forth tonight. Mr. Hunter.
Oh, no comment. No, just wanna say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone and here's to a prosperous new year.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, to you as well. And Mr. Brown.
All right. Well, I'll try to be brief for one, but I do wanna let this, uh, opportunity go by without, uh, saying goodbye to my colleague, Mr. Harris. And I know this will be our last official board meeting together. Wanted to let you know personally that your, um, partnership and the friendship that we have shared has been, has meant a lot to me, uh, even when it seems like I'm not listening to you, which is a lot of the time. I was still listening to what you had to say. Actually have learned quite a bit from, uh, working with you and really gonna miss you, uh, being on the board. You've, uh, made a real difference, I think, in this division for the kids, uh, in the North District especially and throughout Newport News. So, uh, really appreciate, um, appreciate you and, uh, hope your family is blessed and that you enjoy retirement. As I teased you already, you're not gonna stay retired very long. I'm sure you'll be, we'll, we'll see you again soon. You'll be back. Thank you.
Mrs. Alger.
Yes, I, I just wanna say that it's been an honor to sit here and to have worked with you. Um, and thank you so much for all that you have done and shared. And, uh, and I, for me, it's been a short time, but in that short time, uh, it's been pretty profound. So thank you so much. And, uh, thank you for every, everything and for everyone and, you know, enjoy your break and, uh, have a wonderful, uh, Christmas and enjoy your holiday with family and friends and do something that's truly meaningful and, uh, and push, continue to push forward kindness. So thank you.
Ms. Amen.
Um, I will also, um, share a few comments, um, with, um, about working with Mr. Harris. I've really enjoyed it. I really appreciated getting a chance to see how you bring your experience to the table and how you think through and you analyze issues and how, how you're able to present, um, kind of the thought-provoking conclusions that you've come to. So I've really enjoyed working with you and learning that from you. Um, so I wish you the best, if you're not a stranger. Um, and to everyone else, I'll say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. Enjoy the holidays and I look forward to seeing everybody in the new year.
Thank you. And Dr. Best.
Okay, I'll be short. Just a brief shout out to Ms., um, I hope I pronounced her name right, Befori, Befori's, AP Government Class at Heritage High School. Dr. Mitchell, uh, Mr. Brown and myself had a chance to sit on their congressional hearing panel in her AP Government Class. And it is just amazing how much those, uh, students know and, and, and what they have shared and how, um, inspiring they were. So I wanna commend her for a job well done and the students for just making us so, so proud. Um, as far as Mr. Harris is concerned, you all miss a lot because you don't get to sit beside him during the meetings. So sometimes his language is colorful. Sometimes his comments are very interesting and I'll say, hot mic, hot, hot mic, hot mic. I don't want to say something. Something, but always the spirit of it is good. It's not something bad or anything like that. And just like everybody else has said, I have learned so much from him, from his military experience. He is a man that truly values and cherishes his family and he let that be known. But he also travels and enjoys life, so I've learned, you better get out there, enjoy. But I'm truly going to miss him and he kinda held it down over here, but whenever he would push the chair back from the...
I was gonna say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you...
And you know it was gonna be on, so I'm gonna miss you, Marvin. I wish you the best, but we're not gonna be strangers, so I wish you the best. Oh, I'm sorry. And Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas. And please make sure you read a book over the, over the break. You have a nice long break.
So I'm changing things up just a tad. I'm gonna go next with my comments. Um, I got the, the honor to come in a little early and see Attorney Amen sworn in for her second term and we're really happy to have her continuing with us. We, I don't get to call her Attorney Amen much, so I thought I'd do so tonight. Um, I appreciate the way she has served the board, um, and I look forward to continuing to work with her. And Mr. Harris, I did not want this day to come. It was a hard one to come for me. Uh, you have been such a support, uh, in my role as chair. You quietly lead from behind and I really appreciate that. When we have been going through some of the worst times that this board has gone through, you have been available, you have called to check in and you've called to make sure that we were considering all that needs to be considered. You care about the students and the children and the families of Newport News Public School. We'll be forever grateful for you. And I note that we will not lose contact. So as a gesture of appreciation for serving the community, uh, on the Newport News Public School Boards, I am going to ceremoniously pass the gavel for you to honor us with closing our meeting this evening and have the last word.
Wow, thank you. Thank you. Wow. I hope this is being recorded. And no, eh, the reason, the reason why, because, uh, I have two granddaughters, uh, seventeen and fourteen. Uh, they actually was here, I think, twenty-twenty when I, uh, when I raised my hand. Uh, the younger one is probably gonna be an attorney. I mean, I, I, I see it in her, right? Uh, she, they both went back, ran for election, they both won. What do you call it, uh, the, uh? Right, right, right. No, student president. It was a student, it was student body president of their, of their prospective grades. So the young one called me, uh, one night. She said, uh, Grandpapa, I thought you was in charge. You know, it threw me off. I said, and I had to pause before I answered that because it's coming from a fourteen-year-old. And I said, well, I, I sorta am in charge. I'm with other people, you know? I, we, I split up duties and responsibilities. And I said, me and, uh, Mr. Brown, we, you know, co, you know, I wanted to break it down to a level, we co-incharge of a district. And she said, well, I thought the person that was in charge was the person I had to gavel. At least that's what she told me. And so, I said, well, that is some truth, so I hope, uh, you know. So she, she would get a chance to see it, hopefully. But no, this is, this has been a, a, an amazing experience. Um, I was always told that you can tell the strength of an organization, even a nation, by how they treat, um, three, um, I wanna say classes of people, but how they treat the elderly, how they treat veterans, the ones that have borne the cross of defending this nation, and how they treat children. You don't have to look far to see if a city or organization is, 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 is doing their best. I'm gonna keep this short because we have to go east, right? But personally thanking all my school board counterparts. You all, I have learned something from each and every one of you. I look at a person's strength and I say, what can I learn from that person's strength? I might disagree with you on something, but everyone has a strength. And so if you focus on what the person's strength is, you completely forget what the negative is. And in turn, it helps you out. So that's the way I sort of view a leadership. But, uh, as we, you know, sit here on this night in the, uh, people's chamber, I'm laying down my duties and responsibilities. The weight of the average voice, you know, has echoed through this chamber at least I have heard for eight years. I have stood beside each one of you, my counterparts, uh, Madam Superintendent, your team, uh, and administration. Lack shifting roads converging toward one hopeful dream. To Madam Clerk, uh, I don't know how you do it. I'm not a, I'm timely, but I'm not that timely. You have recorded every turning page of our debates, which is an outstanding, um, talent to have. Uh, to the attorneys, uh, you have guided us, uh, pushed us, uh, toward roads that has been set straight. And I wanna thank you for all of your, your efforts. To the staff and administration, uh, who breathe life into plans. Your steady hands have shaped futures in crowded hallways and in crowded spans. To the parents, uh, who have entrusted us with their most precious kin, their children. And to the students, bright beacons, this is where all of our journeys began. Know that every road must have its end beneath this beautiful and glorious, uh, sky. And here I step aside with a grateful heart and a sigh. No matter where I will travel, your voices will remain with me and echoes of the work that we have completed in the sun and also in the rain. For every road truly, truly, truly has an ending. Yet from its close, we rise. Carrying forth the dreams beneath God's unfolding skies. I would like to or may these words bless individuals within earshot of my voice, this beautiful city of ours, this elderly state and the promise of a continued mission of this nation. And have a great holiday and don't leave the light on. Thank you for all of your well wishes and love and support. And with that, we close. Thank you.